Hello, what have we here?
Welcome to Cloud City Council.
I have been waiting for you.
We're our host Rob, John and Alan. Talk all things Star Wars.
Wipe them out. All of them.
From the comic shop to the silver screen.
And here I thought we were friends.
Everything's perfectly alright now. We're fine. We're all fine here now, thank you. How are you?
The Force is strong with this one.
Hello and welcome to Cloud City Council. My name is John and my co-host here with me as always is Alan.
Hey, what's up?
And this week we have a special guest, Austin.
What's up everybody?
So it's double A's against me.
Don't you feel special?
Yeah, exactly. So this week we actually, Rob is away. He's on holiday, that individual. Uh, I hope he's enjoying himself. Uh, I'm sure he is. It sounded like fun what he was talking about, so. But he just couldn't be here. He's disappointed he wasn't here, but you know, it is what it is. Just happened to be that we scheduled this live broadcast at the same time. So, this week is a little different than normal because this is our live stream fundraiser. And uh, we'll be putting this podcast out next week, but uh, for now, um, we wanted to do something a little different, so. What we'll do is we'll quickly zip through the news and then we'll play our little game that I've got set up for these two guys, which is a bit of a trivia contest. And uh, so let's start off with, they announced, I guess it was the, no, it wasn't the 501st, it was the Mandalorian mercs announced that they are going to be wearing purple ribbons at the opening of Force Awakens. Uh, to mark for Daniel who passed away after being able to see the Force Awakens. Um, so they're actually still gonna mark his passing and the fact that he was a Star Wars fan by wearing his favorite color. So they're gonna have little, little purple ribbons. I thought that was really cool.
That is?
Yeah.
I think it's awesome. Well, I think that whole thing for Daniel was fantastic, so I think, I think it's great, so.
Yeah, congratulations to everybody on that. I think there's so many people that should be given credit for doing a great thing for, for him and, and I'm sure he appreciated it quite a bit. And so this is definitely one of those things where I love our fanbase. And not our personal fanbase, but the Star Wars fanbase.
Is there some kind of like initiative for everybody to do that? Like, are they trying to?
I think basically they, they started out doing it on their own. I suspect what we'll find out is everybody will probably do it, but I think initially it was just something they were doing. But I think Jedi News got a hold of it and put it up, so.
Well, and I do, I do like what Star Wars is doing right now. They're, they're out there supporting charitable causes themselves a- as a whole anyway, star wars.com because um, they've been posting out those free, you have an opportunity, I guess, if you donate, you have an opportunity to win different things and stuff like that. And I can't remember, do you remember what that was, what it was called, John? It started with an O and I can't remember the name of it.
Force for Change, I think is what they call it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like omaze.com or something. I can't remember, but, but yeah, I, I think it's fantastic that the Star Wars community comes together and does things for people. This is, this is it, this is what it's all about in the end, as much as we love our movies, the fact that we can go out like we're doing today with uh, you know, with the Children's Miracle Network, the, the fact that we can do things for other people, that's the best part about it.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I really love that aspect of it. I think that's really jazzed me for this whole thing and and it, you know, there are lots of other groups that do a lot of great things, so I'm not, I'm not specifically pointing out to Star Wars fans, but but I think it's interesting to kind of see how often it seems to happen with that fanbase and, and especially with the 501st and the mercs and the rebels. I think they do an awesome job at raising money for charity.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, okay. So here's my first question for you guys that I would like your comment on. Um, and I guess we'll start with Austin since he's the guest. What do we, what do you expect or want from the Force Awakens?
Um.
What would Austin need to see in order to say, yep, I'm good. I went and saw that?
Uh, lightsaber battles, I like them, but um, I, I don't know. I wanna see what they've been doing, oh, like, the whole time, since the uh, episode six. Like I wanna, I wanna find out what the old characters have been doing. I wanna see they, they need to have a good story for Finn, I think, if he's gonna like, start like, I don't know as much as you guys, but if he's gonna be like the new Jedi and the new main character for these three movies, uh, I want him to drag me in. As long as he has a good story, I think I'm gonna be okay. Him and Rey.
Yeah. Alan?
Uh, you know, I want, I want good story. I want mythology. I want, I want everything we've had with the six films, the prequels included. There was a lot of great storyline. There was a lot of mythology. There were a lot of things that went into thought when, when they, when they wrote those stories. That's what I want out of this. Sure, I'm excited about the action scenes and you know what? Nothing gets me excited, more excited than watching, you know, the X-Wing fight, uh, fighters do their thing. Watching uh, you know, Han or whoever it is that flies the Falcon. And, and even watching the lightsaber battles, but in the end, I really want to be able to connect with the story, which is something that I, I was able to do with all six films to this point.
Yeah, for sure. And I think that's, my biggest thing is I, I don't want a film that feels disconnected from the other six.
Agreed.
I wanna feel like the films are just as much a part of the, the, the pattern that Lucas set up as anything else that we've seen. I would be highly disappointed if it isn't, but I'm not expecting that. So I'm not going in there expecting us not to be entertained and not to enjoy ourselves. And I think we've been able to appreciate a lot of things that they've done and so I'm, I'm hopeful.
You know what else I want? I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say this because I've enjoyed seeing Finn wield a lightsaber in the different trailers that we've seen.
Yep.
But um, it, it, you know, I, I might be jumping out on a ledge here, but I wanna see Rey with a lightsaber in her hand. I wanna see, I wanna see her popping into the scene, wielding a lightsaber and, and doing a little bit with it. Now, whether we see that or not, I don't know. I'm hoping that she's, she is the Jedi. She's the Force-sensitive Jedi, the Skywalker, whatever it might be. I, I really am, cuz I like her and I'm a big fan of hers and I'm rooting for her in this entire saga.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm excited for her, her journey. Um, she, from the trailers and such, you get that feeling like she's the Han Solo, Han Solo-type character. Um, but yeah, I kind of agree with you. I think she's probably gonna be a Skywalker Solo-type. And that would suggest Force sensitivity, but no idea, so.
Right.
I wanna, I'd like to see them, like whoever is the Force-sensitive one, if not both of them, build their own lightsabers.
Yeah, that'd be cool. That's something other than in the Clone Wars uh, television series we've never actually seen.
And the deleted scene from Return of the Jedi that popped in.
Different than the way they presented it in
It was.
Clone Wars, but that doesn't mean anything.
And we didn't see much of that deleted scene. We really only saw as he's putting the last parts and pieces together of the lightsaber, so we didn't really see him put the crystal in or anything like that. So, yeah, it, it is a little bit different than what we saw in the Clone Wars. I'm, I'm with Austin. That's not, I, I wouldn't mind seeing that either.
No, 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 no. Yeah, I agree. I, I'm, I'm not saying I wouldn't. My biggest thing is I wanna see more than five minutes of Luke in that movie, but I have a sneaking suspicion we might not.
You and me both.
But we'll see. Okay, so moving on because I think the little quiz is going to take a little bit. Uh, finally, and I don't know that, that Austin, you've done this, so this, I, I'm just asking general impressions, so. Alan, have you read Vader Down yet?
I am. I'm caught up. I've read uh, all three issues to this point.
Okay. What's your general impression so far?
I love it.
Yeah.
I really love it. As much as I loved the Vader comic series when it first started, I wanna say that with Vader Down, they've taken the next level up, taken a step up. Um, and the opening issue was just incredible. Um, from, from everything, from the way that Vader took on two squadrons in space to the way that he, and, and destroyed him, mind, mind you, to the way he crash landed because Luke, you know, because of Luke, um, ended up on the planet and then takes on an entire, you know, what, full squadron, two squadrons of, of soldiers on, on the land and took them all out. It's like, it's vintage Vader.
Yeah.
Folks, if you're not reading this, you should because it's vintage Vader. It's fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. It's been really good. I've, I've enjoyed it. I'm, I'm caught up as you are and, and yeah, it's been great. Those two comics have been good and getting better and this particular crossover has worked a lot for me, which I wasn't sure about when they initially said it. Uh, but it's been really cool and I like the interaction between Afra and Luke and especially the, the protocol droid, the assassin protocol droid.
Oh, yes.
I think he's, he, he was hilarious in that last comic book with him.
Yes, he was.
Hands cut off.
Well, he gets his, he gets his arm ripped off by Chewie.
One pulled out and one cut off, that's what it was.
And he yells at Chewie and, and what is it with you guys and, and dismembering people?
Yeah.
And then, and then Luke takes his other arm, and then Luke stabs him and he still has the, the, the wherewithal to come out with the other droid and, and BT, I believe is the other droid's name, and come out and, and try and take over.
Yes.
It was, I'm like, do you die or what?
I know, it's crazy. It makes you appreciate why they were locked away with their chips out. Um, but yeah, they're great characters. I love them. So, it, it's fun to watch that. Afra for the first time seemed like a real bad guy, which was interesting cuz up until now, I've sort of seen her sort of a tweener.
Yeah.
And in this last comic, she actually came across as a bad guy, which, which I think is good. I think she needs to be.
Actually, her character development, development has gotten really good, not with, just with Vader Down, but I wanna say the previous two Vader comics.
Yeah.
The previous two issues because you got a chance to see when she was almost killed by Vader, how uh, manipulative almost that she could be in such a way to save her own skin. And then, and now here she is, kind of handling things on her own in the most recent issue, and I thought she did it very well and and I've, I've enjoyed her development as a character.
Yes, absolutely. I think they've done a really good job of developing a character we don't know about and making her somebody that we actually have interest in and actually do care about, which I think is, I think it's a an awesome development. I really like the series. I would recommend everybody reading it because it is well worth it.
So I, I wanna ask you a question real quick, and I know you wanna get into this trivia thing, but do you believe in any way that the planet that they've landed on has any sort of significance for any reason?
I don't have any clue. Well, it has a Jedi temple on it, that much.
Yes, it does.
That much we do know, so it does have some, some reason for it. But beyond that, I don't know. I'm assuming there must be at the end of the day, but they haven't, they've been so vague about what it is and what it isn't, that I think most of us don't really know yet.
Right.
Um, but I'm pretty excited to kind of see how it goes.
It's just been intriguing to me to see the different Jedi temples pop up in the, in the recent um, platforms and media that we have, whether it be Rebels, whether it be even back in Clone Wars, but now through the comics and um, in, in different series of comics, Shattered Empire, and, and even with the most recent books, you know, where we read Weapon of a Jedi, you're seeing different Jedi temple satellite locations around the galaxy popping up that we didn't know about and, and weren't even alluded to previous, which I think is kind of cool.
Yeah, it's absolutely amazing and I, I, there's so much that they're giving us now in depth with everything. It's just, it's been so great. Um, I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing how this all develops.
Me too.
Alright guys, so with that, I think we'll end the normal portion of our show. Because of course Austin's having trouble necessarily knowing what we're talking about. Um, so let's.
You mean we have Austin now who is taking, literally taking the place of Robert and is not caught up on the comics like we are, really?
I'm gonna make you proud.
We're always giving, we're always giving Robert a hard time about not being caught up, whether it be comics or the Rebel series. You're fitting right in, Austin. It's perfect.
Yep.
I'm almost caught up on Clone Wars.
Yeah, yeah, he's at least headed Robert on that.
Oh, that's a good thing.
Yeah, so, alright, so here we go. We have the Star Wars trivia challenge for the members on the stream who are watching this currently on Twitch TV. Uh, you will actually be able to follow along and you can take your guesses along with our two gentlemen here. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask one of you to answer the question. If they can't answer, the next one can, so that it's fair.
And you're gonna find out just how much of a Jedi I truly am not.
Alright, here we go. So you ready?
Yes.
Let's do it.
Okay, in the Clone, okay, this for Austin. In the Clone Wars television series, uh-huh.
Oh.
What is Anakin's nickname in the first season?
Sky Guy!
Yay, he got it!
Well played.
Alright, so, to Alan, what was the name of the actor who played Anakin Skywalker in Return of the Jedi?
Uh, in Return of the Jedi?
Yep.
Ooh. Um. Oh my gosh. You threw a loop at me! That's not fair! And, and I'm, I'm picturing oh. I'm picturing of Latin descent, but I'm not thinking of the name, and I could be totally off on that.
Yep.
I am totally off on that.
You are.
It's not David Prowse cuz he was Darth Vader, so we're talking about Anakin and he was, well, okay, special edition or original?
Original.
Oh! Not fair!
Well, the original guy was in the special edition too, to be fair.
That's true, he was. I, I'm gonna have to pass cuz I'm not gonna get this right. I'm gonna slaughter.
Hayden Christensen.
No.
I don't know.
Sebastian Shaw.
Sebastian Strong.
See, I don't know why I thought Latin either. That was ridiculous. Maybe it was cuz of Sebastian. I'm horrible.
Could've been, could've been.
Alright, everybody, everybody that's listening, you can slaughter me on Twitter. Do whatever you want. That was just, I, I'm, I'm gonna hide my face in shame now, 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 woman.
Isn't, isn't Sebastian Shaw in X-Men?
Hmm, different guy. Uh, okay, so others, okay, this is back for Austin again. It's, it's not Sebastian Shaw. Um, there is a Sebastian, but I don't think it's Shaw. Anyway. Uh, other than C-3PO and R2-D2, can you name three droids from all six films?
Oh man. No. I wanna say that I cannot. Let me think.
That have been in, that have been in all six or just three droids?
No, 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 no. Three droids from all six films. So not in all six films, but over all the films, can you name three droids who aren't?
I can't, does General Grievous count?
Hmm, that's a good question. Would he count, Alan? He's half-machine, half-man. He's more of a cyborg, I would say.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if I'd wanna give it to him, but uh, I, I, yeah, I don't know, cuz I'm, I'm trying to think through my mind if I can think of even the number.
Uh, Super Battle Droid, Destroyer Droid, Battle Droid.
Yeah, close enough. Alright, sure, we'll give that to you.
This is rigged, I tell you, rigged!
Well, I was thinking more along the lines of R4, you know.
I was gonna even drop IG-88.
IG-88, there's another one. Alright, Alan. What was the original Japanese movie that was one of the inspirations for Star Wars: A New Hope? Bonus points, can you name the director?
Why are you doing these? Easy questions. You give me the tough ones. I'm telling you, it's rigged!
He's throwing fireballs at you, Alan. I didn't have anything to do with this.
I, I wanna say it was a Samurai film.
Uh-huh.
But I don't remember the name, nor do I remember the director.
Austin?
Crushing Tiger, Hidden Dragon.
No.
Oh, no. No.
Not even close. It's Japanese, first of all, not Chinese. Alright, so if you guys give up, it is uh, The Hidden Fortress. And the director's name is Akira Kurosawa.
If this ever gets back to Brian Young, he'll kick my butt because he always writes about these things in star wars.com and I read them religiously.
Alright, so here's one for Austin. He's not gonna get. What film was George Lucas supposed to direct before Star Wars? He actually created the first story treatment, but did not have a chance to do it because of financial reasons for the producer.
Jurassic Park.
Nice try. Uh, Alan?
Is this the one that eventually made it to the screen?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it's American Graffiti.
Nope.
No, I'm thinking of that.
Nope.
Cuz I'm, cuz I just watched the documentary, American Graffiti took a while to get out.
This is one that he actually didn't actually have anything to do with in the end, other than to write the first story treatment. You got a different guess?
No.
Apocalypse Now.
Yeah, I wouldn't have got that. I wouldn't have got that, although props to Austin for just guessing names. That's just pretty good.
Alright, Alan. Let's go. You guys, one for how many? Or two for how many? Uh, in the original movies, when R2-D2 was moving on three legs, what did that mean functionally? Not as in like, from the actual story mode, but what did it actually mean for what was going on for behind the scenes?
Well, he had to have a character in him.
Yeah.
Yeah, but when was there a character in them and when wasn't there?
Um.
In other words, when was Kenny Baker R2-D2 and when wasn't he?
Oh gosh, I just watched the documentary the other day about this. They used him specifically on um, uh, when they when he had to go up and down steps and things like that, they had to use him. If it was on flat surfaces, it was always wheels.
Yep, that's true.
And if he was talking to somebody, I don't know if that's true.
And, you know, well, Kenny Baker did a lot of things in there because uh, R2-D2's head movement was a result of Kenny Baker as well.
Right.
So.
But when he's on three wheels, he is what?
Rolling.
He is, he's an RC.
Yeah.
He is not actually Kenny Baker.
That's it. Anybody listening, I'm blaming the question you're in here. He's throwing stuff here. This is not fair.
Alright, Austin, Austin, true or false? C-3PO was taken apart or exposed in three movies?
True.
Bonus, can you name them?
Um, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, I know Phantom Menace, he was exposed. His head was taken off in Clone Wars.
Oh, that was four times.
And.
We're not talking, oh yeah, Attack of the Clones, you mean?
Attack of the Clones.
I, I just realized I got it wrong, guys.
It is four times.
Yep, it's four times.
Well, it's still true. He is taken apart in three movies.
Yeah, but it's actually four movies he gets taken apart in.
Yeah, and then the last one. Um, I know it's from it's from like the original saga. It's uh, dun, dun. Cuz, oh, uh, uh, uh. Empire Strikes Back because Chewbacca wears them with a backpack.
Good job.
Well done.
Okay, what's the other one?
But, the other one was um, it was on the Millennium Falcon and I wanna say it was I don't think it was New Hope, was it? I think it was, yeah, it was New Hope.
But it wasn't on the Millennium Falcon. It was when he fell off the thing after the sand people attacked Luke and he broke his arm.
Is that what it was?
Yep, that's the one I forgot.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, cuz Phantom Menace, he didn't have any parts on. He didn't have his kill rings. Uh, Attack of the Clones, he was, his head was taken off and put on a, on a Battle Droid.
And it was such a drag.
Yeah, oh god. And then, and then in uh, in New Hope, he lost an arm and in Empire Strikes Back, he was blown to pieces.
And by the way, yes, that was funny. Don't give me that courtesy laugh. It was a drag.
Alright, here we go, Alan. What was the name of the first ever Expanded Universe book written for Star Wars?
God, Dion, why did you give him these?
No, no, no. I, you know, what he does, what he doesn't realize, I know this because I own the book actually. I, I may have, I may have read it so long ago, well, hold on, because I'm gonna go look through my pictures. I just took a picture of it recently. It was oh man. I'm trying to think if it was one of the Neil Smith um, books or not.
I'll give you this. It was written by Alan Dean Foster.
There you go. So it was the Alan Dean Foster book and it was, um, hold on, I'm getting there. Oh crap, what did I do with it? It's, I got a picture of it right here.
I got a picture of it.
They're saying that was a bad pun.
It was Splinter of the Mind's Eye.
You are correct.
Yeah. See, I have that book and I'm looking, I'm looking at it right now. It's pretty worn, but yes, Splinter of a Mind's Eye.
Yeah, now for the bonus, do you know the original reason for the story being written?
Um. Trying to gather it from even looking at the cover, but the cover's not giving me much clues.
Won't tell you anything.
I, you know what? It's been so long. I mean, we're talking, talking over thirty-five years, so I don't know.
When we recorded Cloud City, uh, a few months back, we actually reviewed this particular comic series. And it turned out when I was looking it up, it, it's because when George Lucas was creating Empire Strikes Back, he was worried that the uh, studio wouldn't give him enough money to actually film what he wanted. So they had them write this little story where it was just Darth Vader, Princess Leia and Luke Skywalker called Splinter in a Mind's Eye.
Nice.
That was gonna be Star Wars 2.
Wow, there you go. Little bit of trivia.
Alright, so, back to Austin. Why is Star Wars: A New Hope still property of Fox when all the other movies are properties of Lucas Films?
Hmm. Gosh, uh, I, I honestly do not know. I'm trying to take a guess here. I'm gonna guess because there's so, somehow they're separate properties. Uh.
There's a very specific reason.
Um. I don't know.
Okay, Alan?
I wanna say it has to do with the original contract.
Mm-hmm, it does.
Because, because Lucas signed the original contract for it and then after signing it before it was filmed, he uh, suddenly realized he did not wanna lose his creative rights to the additional uh, movies and, and so then he reworked the, the contract, but I think part of the contract included not that, not getting the full rights to that one.
That is more or less correct. The only addition to that is, is that Lucas actually got the merchandising.
Yes, and that's.
Funded Empire.
And that's how he got the contract reworded too, was he told them, and, and back then Fox didn't care. Nobody cared because, because back then, well, and 3.75 action figures just didn't exist back then until Lucas started working with Kenner, so yeah.
So there you go. Good job. Alright, moving on. Okay, so was that, no, that was, okay, so Alan.
Yes, sir.
Other than, this goes back to something you should know the answer to. Other than Boba Fett, what were the names of at least two other bounty hunters on the Exeter during Empire Strikes Back?
IG-88 and Bosc.
That was pretty easy.
Yes, it was.
I'm gonna get Bosc, but not the other one.
The other ones. I had to look up some of them cuz I was like, who is that guy?
IG-88's the other one that's easy for me to remember cuz he was the only droid amongst them, I believe.
Yes, he was. Yep. Cool, good job. Alright, Austin, can you name the five planets Anakin visits in the prequels?
Um. Naboo.
Mm-hmm.
Tatooine.
Yep.
Geonosis.
Yep.
Coruscant.
Yep.
And I, I, if I had enough time, I could remember this one.
I'll give you a hint. I'll give you a hint.
Obi-Wan fight.
Yeah, that's the one.
And it's, it starts with an M.
Hmm, wow, even better. You're really close.
It's such a far way away.
Oh, that was.
Moose of Fire.
There you go. Nice job, nice job, okay.
Those are the only planets he visits, really?
Yep, that's the only planets he visits in prequels. I actually was thinking about it.
Hmm, you're welcome.
Thanks, thanks.
Alright, so can you, okay, Alan, can you name the only main character we have not seen in the advertising, be it toys, trailers or posters, mentioned in The Force Awakens?
You finally give me an easy one.
Uh-huh.
Luke Skywalker.
Nope.
No, wait! Did you say mentioned? You said mentioned.
Yep, in the toys, trailers or posters.
C-3PO.
Nope, he's in the poster.
Wait a minute, I'm thinking then.
Tag me in.
You're, you're thinking the wrong side of the light.
No, no, you're not tagging. I'm seeing it on them. I'm on the wrong side, huh? Uh, Captain Phasma.
No, of course we've seen her in all the trailers, toys.
Yes, we have. So why, oh, oh, no, no, no.
Tag me in.
Does voice count too?
Uh, oh, hmm, no, cuz we haven't seen them.
But we've heard, yeah.
Haven't seen them.
Then I'm going Snoke.
Yep.
But we've heard him.
Yep, but we have never seen him.
Okay.
At all.
See, I, see, this is, that's, that's what happens when I don't listen to the question in the first place and I give you five answers because none of them qualified because I didn't listen to the question.
Yep, so bonus, can you name the actor?
Yes, Andy Serkis.
Thank you. Easy one for you.
I was thinking the original movies, like who's from the original movies and I, and I didn't listen to the question either.
No, main bad guy. It's only the main bad guy, but we've not seen a thing about him. Alright, so, Austin, in the script as written during the climactic scene between Darth Vader and Luke Skywalker, what is the line that David Prowse, the actor who played Darth Vader in person, said to Mark Hamill?
I've, I've heard this.
Now, now, hold on, hold on. I got it. I, it's multiple choice even for you.
Can I just say it without you answering? I see the multiple choice. It's Obi-Wan killed your father.
Oh, he got number C. Good job.
Wow.
Good job, cuz it's, A was I am your father, I killed your mother, Obi-Wan killed your father, the Emperor killed your father. Nice job. Okay, Alan. What country, oh, this is, here, here, now you get an easy one. What country was the real world location for Hoth?
Oh.
And if you don't get this, oh boy. You're fired.
I'm gonna be fired then. I'm gonna say Greenland, but.
You're wrong.
Yeah, see, I knew it.
Austin?
Huh?
Do you know the answer?
Um. Siberia.
Norway.
See, and we're supposed to know, okay, in my defense, I, Austin didn't know either.
Yeah.
Alright, here we go. According to Carrie Fisher, what, what was she and Harrison Ford doing the night before filming their first scenes on Bespin? Would you like me to read the multiple choice, Austin?
Uh, yeah.
Was she A, sleeping, B, at a rock concert, C, visiting with the Queen, or D? Was she A, sleeping, B, at a rock concert, C, visiting with the queen, or D, partying with the Rolling Stones?
Uh, partying with the Rolling Stones.
You are correct.
Yeah.
In fact, they were partying so hard that she said they were still a bit drunk when they started the filming.
That's why Han says I know. He's supposed to say I love you, he just didn't remember.
Oh, Carrie Fisher.
Alright, so Alan. What was the name of the creature that fought Chewbacca for C-3PO's head in Empire Strikes Back?
The name?
Not his personal name, what was the, what was that creature called?
This isn't fair, because I don't remember, I'm picturing him, I know what he looks like, he's playing, he, he's sitting there playing, uh,
Football with him?
No, it's not football, keep away.
Yeah, keep away.
Playing keep away with him. He's got fangs. If I remember correctly.
Yes, yep.
Good heavens.
Did you shoot yourself?
I know I'm gonna shoot myself because I should know this, because I can picture him, but I can't think of the name.
Alright, Austin?
Uh, if I saw a picture, I might be able to, but I can't remember.
Okay. On that basis, I'm gonna tell you, it's an Ugnaut.
Oh, I wouldn't have got that.
I hate you.
Uh, awesome, okay, here's a tricky one, I hope, unlike the rest of them, uh, Austin, what was the first line said by C-3PO after being repaired on Cloud City? Oh my, I'm terribly sorry to intrude? B, stormtroopers here, we're in danger, oh no, I've been shot. C, I'm backwards, you filthy furball, or D, how rude?
How rude?
That's your answer?
Nah, I don't want it to be.
Okay. Shall I turn it over to Alan?
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
B.
Close, it's A.
Was it A?
Yep, he says, oh my, I'm terribly sorry to intrude, don't get up, and then he gets shot.
Oh, see, you split it up into A and B together.
Yep.
You turkey.
Because they actually are separate quotes, actually. He turns him on, he says that, then he turns him off, and then he turns him on again later, and that's when he said stormtroopers here, we're in danger.
And A, B, and C are actually in correct order of how they appear in the movie too, you're just a turkey, I don't like you.
This is just wrong, John.
Alright, Alan. According to the new canon, what is Emperor Palpatine's first name?
Sheev.
Very good. Alright, Austin.
Yeah.
What Star Wars prop appeared, he, I made this just for you. Appeared in Star Trek, the J.J. Abrams 2009 movie.
Nothing, cuz that's blasphemy and it would never happen.
See, I do.
But it did happen.
Um, hyperdrive.
Alan?
I should know this too, because I just said that it did happen, cuz it did happen, and I've seen the dang picture. I don't remember, no, wait. It is, uh, it's a pair of clothing.
Nope.
No, it's not the clothing.
Nope.
Cuz I keep thinking it was the clothing.
Yeah, it's R2-D2.
What?
Yep.
Somebody.
It's cuz when there's an explosion and there's a bunch of rubble, R2-D2 is one of the rubble.
What did they do that for? That's wrong, how rude?
How rude.
That's, that's one of those deep in line Easter eggs, now I gotta go back and watch Star Trek.
Yeah.
Does that mean, uh, that Star Trek is canon in Star Wars?
I doubt it, but.
I don't know, guys.
Alright.
Same universe here.
Alan, according to the published reports, how much money has The Force Awakened made in ticket sales so far?
Oh crap, um, I wanted this.
This on the show.
Yes, we have, and it was in the teens, I thought it was fourteen or sixteen.
Not even close.
It's even more? Was it in the teens? It was more.
I'm giving you hints, that's terrible.
Yes, you have. Cuz we have talked about it.
And like, last time, in fact, I think.
Yeah, but that was a month ago, you're supposed to.
Two weeks ago, Alan, come on now.
Fine, it was two weeks ago, you expect me to remember two weeks ago? It's in the hundreds then.
Hmm, no, too high. Okay, Austin?
Um, thirty-eight billion.
That was a good guess, but way too high, it's fifty million so far.
Well, where, where am I? It's just so Cloud City Council, I don't know why I just guessed in the billions for tickets.
I don't know, cuz we've never had a movie make over two billion ever, so yeah. Alright, guys, well, guess what, you've made it through, hooray.
Oh, dear.
Oh, man, so that was a lot of fun, for me.
For you, and probably for the listeners who are laughing at us and, 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 and like I said, any of them who know me, you're gonna come back and me, dude, you suck, man.
Ah, well, you know.
John gave you literally the hardest questions in the world.
Thank you, at least somebody recognized that.
Dude, I wrote these questions from memory, I just wanna make that clear.
Oh, so they're tainted?
Yep, that's right.
You know, if I wasn't in such a hurry, I would have brought up online and I'd have been Googling everything you said.
Yeah, well, you don't get that option.
Disney owns, uh, Star Wars now.
Good job.
Whoever the rights were, it doesn't matter.
Alright, well, actually, they do not own Star Wars, the original movie. Now, it's still Fox's in perpetuity.
Although, although for not much longer, I believe.
Uh, nope, that's only Empire and Return of the Jedi. They have Star Wars A New Hope in perpetuity. So, the only way that Disney can distribute it, much like this last year with the Blu-rays, is they actually had to get Fox's permission, and it still has the Fox labeling on it. So, basically, I think what'll end up happening is at some point, those two will negotiate as to getting all of it, but for now, that's what they've got.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Nope, I got, I'm almost done with Clone Wars, I'm halfway through season five. And if you ask John, I wasn't even on season five yet last night.
So, John, I don't know how much time you have, but I, and I don't know how much time you have, Austin, but I wanna hear, what do you think so far?
Um, it surprised me, because you see like this, this, um, kinda Pixar-y animation, and you think that it's gonna be a little kid show where they teach you lessons and stuff like that, and why it has those elements, it, it surpassed what I thought it was gonna be, because I thought they weren't gonna kill anybody, and they literally kill somebody like every episode.
Yep.
Like, and, I don't know, you just get like the sense of darkness, like, I just watched one of the episodes where, um, I think its name is Hondo or Hondu.
Yep.
Hondo.
Where he goes, um, and tries to take cobre crystals from younglings, and he was ruthless with the, about the younglings, he didn't even care. And it's just like, it's darker than I thought it was gonna be, so I enjoy it way more than I thought it was going to.
What is your, what's your favorite season or story arcs or episodes to this point?
Um, there was where, uh, Rex was, they were on that, um, the dark planet, Umbra, Umbra?
Umbra.
And they had that.
You talking about Corral?
Yeah. Yeah.
Dude, that whole arc series was good.
Yeah, that was one of my favorite parts, cuz I, I liked, I like knowing like some of the behind the scenes stuff from the movies, like how the clones, how, like Rex is slowly coming away from being a mindless clone. And I, I love that.
Yeah, no, and, and that, that particular story arc was at the end of my favorite season, season three was my favorite, I,
Yeah.
Actually, no, that was the start of four, season three was my favorite, cuz I loved the Mortis arc where Anakin and, uh,
Right.
Obi-Wan and, and Ahsoka all ended up going into the,
The father and son and daughter.
Yeah, seeing the father, son, and, and, and daughter, and it was the dark side versus the light side and balance, that was my favorite, favorite one. Um, second, only, you know, the, the second one to me was that season was the, uh, the arcs of the Nightsisters. I love the Nightsisters.
Yeah, that was, that was.
Those are my favorite story arcs of all, of, of the entire, you know, of, of seasons one through five.
Since Austin's not actually done them, I, I, I can't really bring up much, but I'll just say that the last five episodes of season five, or four episodes.
Yep.
And then, pretty much the first three or four of the lost missions and the last four of the lost missions are some of my favorites in the whole thing.
Austin's Lost Missions, that, that season six, as they call it, will blow your mind.
Yeah, I can't wait, I can't wait.
That one, you, you think the stories are good right now, that one just opens it up to so much, it will blow you away.
Yeah, and you're introduced to a lot of things that you're personally really interested in, so I think it's, I think it's cool.
I have to say that my favorite overarching thing throughout the whole, the whole show is Ahsoka. Like, seeing her grow from like a naive kinda little padawan, padawan where everything's good to learning under Anakin and all these other Jedi, and she's becoming like more grayish and like she lives in between both sides of the force.
Funny that he says grayish, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, but we won't go into that, cuz that's spoilers.
Nope, you, all I'm gonna say is you're on the right path with your thinking. Rebels is, Rebels is awesome, dude, when you get to Rebels, you're gonna see a lot more, you'll enjoy it.
I can't wait, I hope they come out with a comic of Ahsoka, I'll, I'll, I'll be on for that.
Yeah, I'd be interested actually to find out some more with her, and.
So would I.
And I, I think they will, but right now, they're focused on a lot of other things, so. But we'll get there, they announced and they released some of Anakin and Obi-Wan this week, which looks intriguing.
Yep. So. And I heard, I heard, for those who enjoy comics, my comic store told me that there's a super comic coming out this week of Star Wars.
Oh, right, okay.
I don't know if you understand what the super ones mean, but.
Is that the like jumbo sized ones?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
They're supposed to be, Star Wars is releasing one this week with, and, and I asked my buddy who's a big comic guy, he's a comic geek. And he said it's gonna have all sorts of stuff in it that you won't see, that, that you don't see in the other series, so it's like brand new stuff coming out this week.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'll be fun. Anyway, boys, I think we'll wrap it up there. Uh, I appreciate you both coming on, I appreciate the fact that I embarrassed you both and enjoyed that tremendously. Um, and Austin will be back with us soon, so when we have our next regular recording after The Force Awakens, Austin is one of our invitees for that roundtable.
I will remember this, I will.
You are welcome to embarrass me anytime you want, uh, Austin does it quite often. And, uh, yeah, so I guess that's it from us from now, uh, if you wanna find out more about what we're doing. Uh, if you're not already on Twitch, you can check us out at twitch.tv forward slash distractions media.